Mamula.
Yes, all right, approval of the agenda, you got anything to add to this unbelievable agenda, Rick?
There'll be, there'll be a few things under COVID update that we want to go through, so.
Excellent, all right, speaking of which, we're at discussion items, let's start with COVID update. Hey Shannon, at some point in response to Terran's question, can you spend just a couple of minutes making sure everybody understands the rules and the times for the five star?
Sure.
Yes.
At some point.
Do you want to do that?
You can start with it.
What's the, what do we have here? All right, I think we, we're a little, we weren't totally prepared, but we've been living this for the last few days, so.
Why doesn't Shannon start with that?
Well, we have Julia on as a panelist as well, so she might be the best person. I think you all know that ComDev has taken the lead on this, so I'd love to have Julia explain that.
You see her? She can fill in some blanks here. So basically, for a restaurant to qualify for five star, there's a checklist of items that we go down through, you know, with them, basically as an inspector on site to make sure that they're complying with those, with those different rules on there. Originally, you know, we required all people to submit what's called the physical distancing protocol compliance form with the county, and so they want to make sure that that's mandatory. That was recommended before it's required to be done. Everybody has to wear masks in the, in the facility, in the business. The difference in the distancing, it's not 10 feet between tables, it's 10 feet between patrons of different households sitting at those tables. So some of your tables, depending on how the chairs are situated, you know, are 12 feet apart in order to make it comply. So some of our smaller restaurants, it's, it's pretty tough for them. They may have only a couple of tables. Some of our coffee shops have decided they don't want to participate because honestly, they, they do better if they're just funneling people in and out to grab their food to go. And then instead, instead of having people setting, actually trying to set in the facility and to keep the spacing, it's just too much of a headache for them. The sanitation, the daily employee symptom checking, those are all things that are required, that they have to be. Another big difference in the five star is the tracking of guests. So you have to have a name and contact information for somebody, at least one person at every table, which should be the same household. So you need the name and contact information for one person from that household that was seated at the table. And there, and that, that's, that's a big change for the restaurants. I think we just got word yesterday that, what are they keeping that, Julia, two weeks, 15 days or something like that? They're required to hold on to that, I believe, that information. So.
You know, Rick, I'm not positive off the top of my head on that.
Yeah, I remember, I think Dan, I think Dan responded, and he shot and said 15 days was required amount of time that they're required to keep that information. They're not required to use a reservation system, but it is recommended because, and that also allows them to have contact information, the people that do that. They have to submit a very specific business plan to the county on how they're, how they plan to operate, how they plan to comply, how they're doing all their employee tracking, monitoring, et cetera. That has to be on file with the county. Another big one is the ventilation system, so there needs to be some change and improvement to current ventilation systems to show, either that they've gone in and installed what's called like a, at least a MRF, M E R V, I believe, MRF 13 level, a filter which is made to filter out certain contaminants within their forced air system, if that's what they have, they can use. And we're seeing more businesses doing this, buying these standalone HEPA filtration systems, that they could have the size appropriately for their space. And then the last resort, what, you know, some people are doing, just because that's really all they can get accomplished, is you have to open windows or doors on opposite walls, and on one of those, you have to have a fan that is blowing air out. So it's pulling air through the restaurant. So if you have a window on one end open with a fan in it, you need at least that equal amount of space open on an opposite wall, to bring that same amount of new fresh air in to the, to the business that's being pulled out through the opposite opening. What this did do, five star, some of our businesses, you know, had tents, outdoor structures that were approved. And in order for those to be considered outdoor dining, they had to have two non-adjacent sides fully open to create a big airflow. That's the only way that could be, could be considered outdoor dining. As outdoor dining, you're still only required to have six feet of separation between patrons. Now, if they're approved to five star, they have the choice of leaving it as outdoor, or they can actually roll those sides down and have smaller openings as long as they have a fan. And they can make it a little warmer, and it's considered indoor, but they have to move the tables 10 feet apart. So it's a bit of a trade-off, but they have options with that. And if a business is five star on the inside, and they have a deck, and they want, on a Sunday afternoon, they want outdoor lunch service on the deck, that outdoor dining is still just six feet of separation. So that, the 10 feet, six feet really stays with, are you indoor or are you outdoor, right? So.
Just to put a finer point on that 10 foot thing, too, just, you know, that the 25% number gets knocked around a lot, but with 10 feet between customers, that you can't reach that. For instance, I have 28 tables normally in the restaurant, where right now, we can only fit nine in. But the way it works, so we got nine six tops. Anytime you have a two that wants to sit down, you can't split those tables up because of the distancing. So at any given point, I can have nine sixes in there or nine twos. So it really is a lot different than just saying it's 25%. That, that is, and I'm pretty sure, Dick, I'm sure you have a similar experience on it. So I don't like that 25% thing getting kicked around, because while that is your max, nobody can reach that with 10 feet between parties. So when we talk about things like rent relief and things like that, there really is a need, even though people have gotten reopened, for us to understand that they'll probably more, be more like 10 or 15% rather than 25.
Well, and then the chances of six people from one household, I mean, I understand that there are six people in a household, but that's not the average, I'm sure.
No, I mean, yeah, you know, I worked yesterday at lunch, I can't tell you how many big parties have, you know, we, because you have to put your name on our waitlist from outside. And then people will come down and say, well, the next two parties are with us, too, can we all sit together? Like, no, you can't, I mean, you know.
Yeah, they're on vacation.
Yeah.
They're not reading the news. Yeah, and then timing, right, if you're five star, you can be, the restaurant can actually be open and serve food till 10:00 PM. All alcohol sale must cease by 9:00 PM, am I getting that right? I think.
Except takeout, takeout alcohol till 10:00.
Takeout alcohol can go to 10:00, yeah.
Does that mean alcohol has to be off the table at 9:00 or?
Off, off the table. No, no consumption on premises after 9:00 PM. So. Yep. Which, yeah, I'm sure that's fun for restauranteurs, why they're still eating.
Grab their drinks.
What other key things, yeah, you know, we're, we're clarifying the bars, people that have bars, because that's always a bit confusing. So, you know, the final word from the county is that if you have a bar, you can seat people at that bar as long as there's still 10 feet spacing from people of different households, as long as they're seated there, and they cannot be within six feet of any food or drink preparation going on. And hanging a piece of Plexiglas on the other side of the bar does not count, you know, for, against distance. So it has to be that six feet of separation.
These MRF air filtration systems, what do they cost the restaurant to put those in?
I bought two, Dennis, I bought two standalone 800 square foot per each units, they're about 2,500 apiece. Dick bought the same units, he bought like 30 of them, I only bought two because I'm a little guy.
I bought, I bought quite a few, we have a substantial investment in ours.
Is there any, any use for those, like, God willing, we get rid, get through this thing, is there any use for those, once we return to some sort of malice of?
I'm going to keep them all the time, Jeffrey, especially during flu season, down in the, you know, having a place that has no windows like we do, I think they're going to be great just for the health of my staff. Yeah. Going forward.
And I agree, I agree with that, I think it, you know, I, I think people are going to be thinking about this for quite some time to come. And I think those that made, made investments in, you know, hospital grade, which is what Eric and I have, you know, I think it, it'd be an advantage at some point.
And, and Rick, just to be clear, all these, the rules and the setup of the, of the five star, that was, that was created by, not by the town of Breckenridge, but by the county and the state?
It's a state program, yes, it's a state program that the county has been allowed to do, so.
Okay.
Jeffrey, it's, it's a state program that the industry has been weighing in on for weeks.
Yeah.
Been kind of slow coming out, shall we say.
To, just, I, I know you guys all know that, but for anybody listening, our staff, the staff of the county, but our staff in town did such an unbelievable job. Rick and Shannon and, and all of their crew, getting this thing going, we were the first, you know, we're the first county to push this thing through. And we had almost 70 restaurants done this weekend, so Rick and Shannon deserve a huge, huge, huge kudos for doing what they did. You know, they could have, they could have slow rolled this thing, and we could be at a couple of restaurants, but truly amazing job by the staff. And you too, Julia, now that you're on.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I appreciate that, and it's always nice to hear those nice things, but it's also a little tough to sit here and listen to that when everybody works so hard, and we really have to, it goes all the way down. I mean, you know, we asked Julia to drop whatever you're working on and kind of take the lead and be our representative. So there's a committee that is kind of, becomes an advisory committee to the Board of Health and the, and really the, probably Amy Weinland is the ultimate person has to say over the five star program, and that committee is made up of a representative from each town, along with, there's somebody from the Breck Restaurant Association, that's. So we have Ken Nelson, and then we have Julia from, from staff setting on that as our representative on that committee that will meet weekly. They have to meet weekly while this program is going on and, and look at things like, if a violation occurs, if we pull a permit. You know, we had a restaurant that received a violation, and so they weren't eligible to participate in the program, but there's no rules that have been established at the state level as to how long they're not allowed to participate. And so, you know, hopefully, the committee's going to address that tomorrow when they meet and see if there's a reasonable period that they're not, they have to set out before they can participate. So the committee is going to play a big role in this, and they're also, you know, the on, will be setting up a kind of compliance monitoring checking system, where we probably will hit every restaurant once a week to make sure that tables aren't getting pushed closer together, and that the windows are not getting closed because customers are complaining they're cold, things like that, that, you know, that only has to happen once, and then they're given a warning. And after that, they're issued a citation, and they, basically on the, any third violation, they're done, they're pulled, their permit is pulled, and they're, they're no longer participating in the program. So the state, very much, a lot of people went to bat for this to happen quickly in Summit County, and there's a lot of people watching to say, don't screw it up, so.
Don't. Both Eric and Rick said, I, Julia, I really appreciate you and your staff, you know, dropping everything and working all weekend to get so many restaurants infected. I, I, you know, that was huge, and like Rick said, you know, all the many folks that were lobbying behind the scenes for the past week. You know, and Rick, you and Shannon, the work you guys did, phenomenal, so lots of appreciation from the whole restaurant community to everyone.
Thank you all.
Just to note, it wasn't just ComDev, Rec, and Municipal Court, and Public Works also had staff working as inspectors out there this weekend. They did a great job.
Yeah, you all.
I think we're going to recruit some of them over to the police department, they're pretty good.
What else you got, Rick?
Well, let's, let's jump in since we're, we've been talking about five star. There, in order for us to participate, it was imperative that all of the municipalities took on a strong role in, in setting up and making these programs happen. The way this is, the way five star is established, it really falls under the umbrella of county public health. But we, you know, the county felt very strongly that they wanted to enter into a memorandum of understanding between Summit County and the different local jurisdictions, basically describing the, the roles and what each of them would do in order to have the five star program. So I sent each of you a, a copy of that MOU that was executed. We had to sign this in order for us to get the program kicked off, so I signed it last Thursday evening. And what I'd like is for one of you to please make a motion to ratify my signature on this MOU for the five star program.
Eric? Should I read it into the record first, Tim?
Um, yeah, that's a good idea, but I think probably for you and Dick, since you are both participating in this five star program, it might be best for you guys not to actually participate in this ratification motion.
All right, very good. We are right now considering memorandum of understanding between the Summit County Board of Health, the Board of County Commissioners of Summit County, Colorado, and the Town of Breckenridge regarding the five star program, are there any questions?
Tim, are you recommending we abstain in the vote?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this? You'll have 60 seconds, if you can use the Q and A function at the bottom of your screen.
Hey, while we're waiting on that, who remembers Terran's question? Is it six, is there a limit on the number of people from a family? Was it six?
I thought it was six, and then you could have any children under.
12.
Under 12.
All right.
Kids under 12 don't count, so you get six people and kids under 12 don't count.
I think that's fair, because they're a lot more difficult to have around the house.
Right? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing with no public comments, is there a motion?
I move we pass a MO, I move we pass a MOU, memorandum of understanding between the Summit County Board of Health, the Board of County Commissioners of Summit County, Colorado, and the Town of Breckenridge regarding the Colorado five star program.
Second.
There is a.
Jeffrey, second. Hey, and I think, I think Tim wants to compliment me.
Yes, I do, but I, I would like, with the council's permission, to ask that the motion specifically ratify and confirm Rick's signature on the MOUs.
Okay, should I start again?
If you don't mind, and Carol was the second, Carol, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, I, I would like to, I, I make a motion that we pass a MOU of understanding between the Summit County Board of Health, the Board of County Commissioners of Summit County of Colorado, and the Town of Breckenridge regarding the Colorado five star program, allowing the town manager, Rick Holman, to ratify the program with a signature? Is that okay?
Um.
I hate to look at disappointment on your face, Tim.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, the motion could be as simple as I move to ratify the town manager's signature on the five star MOU with Summit County.
Okay, you know, and I, I'll go with brevity and go do that. I make a motion that we ratify the town manager's signature on the five star program with, with Summit County.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Sure.
Second.
Hey, there is a motion and a second, any further discussion from council? Roll call.
It's GLO.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yeah.
Ms. Sade. Yes. Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
And Mr. Carlton and Mayor Mamula will abstain.
Thank you, Helen, all right, motion passes, thank you very much.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you, guys.
It's early, Jeffrey, it's early. Uh, what else you got, Rick?
I want to give you an update on where we're at with our business and rent relief. So our, our business relief for restaurants has been kind of holding steady for the last five or six days. I, we're at 80, 82 applications to restaurants have been approved for a total of $356,000 plus change that have been given out so far to restaurants. That was as of last Thursday, and as of today, that number has not changed. So we may be, we may have hit everybody we're going to hit in that, in this December round right now. With regards to rent relief, Shannon's got a quick update for you on that for individuals.
So as of yesterday, FERC had 632 submissions with the average rent rate around $1,100 a month. 77% of those are restaurant and food service workers. 50% of the applicants have lived here for at least five years, 70% work in the town of Breckenridge. As of right now, FERC is spending off their federal dollars, and so they have not used the Breck money to date, but I expect that will change after next week.
Shannon, did they report how much they have awarded yet of the federal dollars?
They did not, I did some, some quick math, and it, you know, they look to be somewhere over 500 grand right now, depending on the rent amounts. And some of that would be county money and some would be federal funding.
Are they awarding the entire 1,100 average, or are they doing a proportion of that, or do you know?
Um, no, I think they're doing 1,100 if it's that, and then for some folks, they are actually doing more. So they're trying to really help everyone, so if you have, you know, what they, one of the things that Brian had mentioned to me the last time we talked, is that they're, they're seeing restaurant workers like in more management type positions, so people who are making more money, and therefore they have high, they have, you know, higher rent amounts and whatnot, and they are trying to help those folks as well. So they are giving out higher than that $1,100 if it's needed.
That's great.
All right, I think everybody has been following the news and know, I think, going to the president for a signature today on the latest relief bill from Congress, and so it'll be, I mean, there is more payroll protection in there for businesses, and certainly that will help our local businesses, was, you know, some of what they're asking for in there, and so I hope that everybody is going to be applying for those dollars. There's probably not as much as we'd like to see, and there certainly doesn't appear to be any money in this core round for local government. So we won't be seeing any reimbursement on dollars we've spent up to this point. So, you know, we'll have to see if anything else comes out of that, but there is opportunities there for businesses going forward. I wanted to, you know, the last time we had a council meeting, the plan, which is, which is great, right? I, I mean, things change every day, so, you know, we, the plan was, we were going to go back to our resiliency committee, and through the resiliency committee, put together a subgroup to really start looking at what other things might the town be doing to try to help, at that time, restaurants try to survive, because there was no in-house dining allowed. And, you know, we had a subcommittee meeting, and we had some, some great ideas being tossed around, looking at, you know, creating a grabbing-go-type mall thing at the Riverwalk Center was one idea, you know, maybe food valets was other ideas. And honestly, it was just, you know, it was, it was hard with the restaurants, because they wanted, the restaurants really wanted to focus on what they know how to do, which is to run their restaurant and not try to dream up a new business model that was really outside the scope of, of, you know, why they got into the business. And then within a day of having that subcommittee, we started focusing all of our energy into the five star. So right now, really the only thing that, that we have done with regards to, to any other things is really tried to improve some pickup to-go spots, designated parking spots. We found that we were a little light in some areas, and we are having some problems in some other areas that we're trying to address. And so Shannon, what do we, what's, is there a number of new spots that were created out of that in the last week that we?
See, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 spaces that are between the courthouse lot, Lincoln, and then South Main and North Main. And then we also added back in, I think it's 10 spaces in the F lot, where we added 30-minute parking. You may recall in the past, I think we had 15-minute drop-off parking in the lot, which we had removed, it was abused for a really long time. But we knew we needed some pickup spaces down that south end of town, and we can't allow for people to stop and park on Park Avenue. So Matthew Culver and Scott Jackman worked with Mikasa and I think Blue River Sports down there to, to see what would work for them, and figured that this, these spots in the F lot would help that problem. You probably know Lincoln, Lincoln can get messy even during a normal year when it's busy, and so with pickup, that was really a disaster. So you see there's some no parking signs that have been put out there, they've added a few spaces on Lincoln, and then we have a sign also pointing people to the courthouse lot to do pickup and out of the lot. So we've assigned some spaces in that lot, try to get people off of the street, and we'll see how that works and then make adaptations as we need.
So that is going on, and I think the other part of what we're, what we're trying to look at is trying to break down data a little more for you to see as you, as you prepare to make decisions going forward. You know, the council, you've had a couple of requests from people to start looking at, at January rent relief. I don't know if that's something you want to consider now, or if you want to have people focusing in on the PPP program, the beds to try to get a dollar that way. Certainly, I think they should take advantage of that before they're taking advantage of getting more money from the town. The other thing that I want to spend a little time and talk about is, do you want to have, you know, there's an ability to break down how a business is performing? And, and, you know, we, Finance put together a document, which is in your packet, that shows even for each industry, you see a huge variation. that shows even for each industry, you see a huge variation of, um, of performance. So, you, you know, in the restaurant, which as an industry has suffered the greatest loss, you have some restaurants that, you know, that have less, and all of this is compared to twenty nineteen. So there are some restaurants that have, uh, suffered less loss than others. So, you know, you can see even on, uh, even on restaurants, you know, there's twelve of them that, that actually did better. They were either flat or did better, uh, than they did in, in twenty nineteen. And then you have some that added up to a twenty percent loss, thirty-seven of them, twenty to twenty-nine. And then you get over to that forty percent plus decrease. And so that tells you that there's a way to look at, see that some are hurting more than others. But there could be a lot of reasons why that's happening also. Could be poor management, it could be a location, it could be, I, I don't know. Could be any number of factors that are creating that. Uh, and some of them just aren't probably able to perform or don't have the menu or set up the same. So to-go, to-go maybe isn't as good for them as it, it might be for somebody else. And that's why they're suffering a, a bigger loss in there. So I think council, you know, you have options when you, if you're looking at business relief, a, a couple of ways. You could, you could certainly, uh, you could tier it based on, uh, what they could be eligible for certain relief up to a certain amount based on their percent of loss, if you wanted to. So that the people that lost more maybe were getting a little more versus the others. Uh, you could just keep it simple and keep it the same if that's what you decide you want to do. You can hold off for now and not do anything because there is some federal dollars that are available out there. You could also do, uh, a similar grant program like the county did, where you're giving out grants to, money to people to help purchase. Uh, I mean, the county is doing a lot with a hundred grand or whatever. I mean, you get a hundred grand, you could go buy, uh, you could help people buy fifty HEPA filters or something, right? Uh, if you wanted to do a grant or something like that to help people. Um, so there's options. Um, we're not suggesting at this time that, uh, you know, that we're addressing any of these other industries. Because, you know, we just, we haven't seen enough of a change, I think, to that. People are going to suffer some loss. We're in a pandemic. This is this, you know, we're happening, our November numbers aren't bad. Uh, Brian's on here and he can, he's going to give you a quick preview of what November did, but it's really tracking like we would think because we had a strong fall before we went into level red. Uh, Brian, why don't you pop on here and let's see if, uh, council has any questions about the document that's in the packet or?
Sure.
How they want to discuss this.
Yeah, like Rick just said, we did run the, what we'll call preliminary November numbers with returns still pending. But November overall for twenty twenty is down six percent, almost six-point-one percent from November of twenty nineteen. Uh, the sectors are following some of the trends we've, we've already seen with the hardest-hit sector being restaurant, down thirty-three-point-three percent, uh, relative to twenty nineteen. Construction down thirteen and, and retail down eight-point-six percent. And then we show, saw short-term lodging be up eight-point-six, grocery up eight-point-seven. And, um, you know, uh, the marijuana business is up fifty-six percent. So there you go. So overall, you're talking about a six-point-one percent decrease from November twenty nineteen. A few things to keep in mind, we have more returns coming in. So that number will likely improve. And then also, that is not a full month of the red, of being in the red, if you will. That didn't occur until towards the end of November. So when we see December, I'm sorry, Eric.
Ryan, what percentage of returns do you have in already for November?
We, I don't know the exact number, Eric, but it's, it's enough of a percentage that we're confident to, to give out the estimate. But, um,
Of course, my concern is, my concern is, you know, the, uh, returns aren't due till the.
They were due two days ago, Eric.
Two days ago, right?
Yes.
You know, a lot of the people that won't, that will be late, they're late because they're probably struggling more than the people that turn their money in early. Um, so I, I feel like that will go in the wrong direction as far as, um, negative compared to, you know, where we should be.
It could. Yeah, this is definitely not, you know, not business as usual. So that could be the case, Eric. Um, we do look for, for large missing returns. For example, if in the grocery sector, you know, we're missing a big return in that area, then we'll use, you know, the prior year number, but we didn't have to do that for any large filers. But there are still a bunch out there, Eric, and we'll keep an eye on how those come in. So that's the story with what we have on November so far. And then in your packet, you have the memo that shows how we analyzed the impacts to the different sectors, uh, of COVID in twenty twenty versus twenty nineteen. Here to answer any, any questions on that. And then also, just like council know, that, that report in the background actually goes down to the level of the individual business. So anyway, we want to sort it or if in the future there, there is a will, um, you know, desire to take a look at those numbers and see what, um, relief might look like. We would be ready to take a look at that as well.
Ryan, could you redo these numbers and pull out January and February?
Yep.
Since those were better, better than last year, I think they're giving, they might be giving some false, um, sense of, uh, the pandemic considering their pre-pandemic numbers. So we could just do March through October or eventually March through November would be great.
Definitely.
And Brian, do you have any idea how much November generally contributes percentage-wise to our annual?
It's not one of the larger months. It's not like December. I mean, it is a winter month, but it comes in the late, off the top of my head, I, I do not know, but it's, it's similar to a summer month.
Okay.
Not, um,
That helps.
November is not like a, again, like a December, but I can include that in, uh, when we do this analysis here, it can put that kind of information in the report.
You know, and, and Brian, how confident, like, uh, we'd, we'd just take, let's say we take restaurants, the percentage that are down one to nineteen, twenty to twenty-nine or whatever. How confident are we that those are accurate numbers i- in, in as far as, is that our data that is being used to determine those numbers? Or is that kind of the self-reporting of the, of the businesses?
It's their self-reporting, Jeffrey. So it's the same number they used on their sales tax returns?
Uh-huh.
So we're very confident that, um, I mean, it's a relatively simple process when you look on it, uh, look at it on an individual restaurant basis, we just add up, uh, those returns for those months. Um, it gets a little complicated when you start talking about all the different sectors and all the percentages down and things like that.
Right.
But as far as where the data is coming from, it's the same source data that we use for the regular net taxable sales report or any other reporting on economic activity in the town. So to the extent that it's being filed correctly, which we have very high degree of confidence that they are being filed correctly, we have an auto program and all that kind of stuff. It's, it's pretty rock-solid data, Jeffrey.
Cool. Thanks.
And is, Brian, is all this retail, um, brick and mortar retail in town?
All, yes, all in town. That's an important distinction, yes. Those are all in-town businesses that we're analyzing. There's no, uh, crate and barrels in there.
Okay, great.
Just to get back to a minute to what I was sort of driving at with Brian, January and February for my business, if you include those in my numbers, inflate the year by ten percent. So whatever, whatever loss I've incurred through the, through the year, if I take January and February out, that loss increases by ten percent. Because January and February are two biggest, and they're two of our three biggest months of the year. So it include those really skews these numbers quite a bit. I think once we see March through October or November, you see a much different picture about what, what the actual pandemic loss is.
Oh, because the, the first two months were unusually good.
They were, yeah, they were normal. Breckenridge is, is hopping good. January and February were both up months and huge months in total. So.
Okay.
I think, Dick, would you agree with that?
Yeah, I, I totally agree with that. And I think that will, um, ring true with, um, the retail and the short-term rental sector as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we ran those numbers for you not that long ago. We ran March through, uh.
Yeah, and they were different, they were different, yeah. But I love the way Bri- uh, Brian broke these ones down into places that were doing okay. I'd like to see how that changes because I, I feel like there will be a difference in how many places actually. What I don't want to do is overstress that there are businesses that did better. I find that really hard to believe. And I think if you take January and February out, I think that will change those numbers.
And Brian, do you think it's fair to say construction i- is really just the cycles of big projects against smaller projects? Because they, I mean, everybody I know in construction seems to be doing pretty well.
Construction, it's, it's almost always anecdotal, Dick. It, it's a tough sector to really look at for trends. One big project in town will send it one direction or like you're saying, just the nature of the projects can send it another. So it's tough for us to pin down, um, really trends in that particular sector.
Yeah. Hey, uh, you know, like, uh, Rick was talking about the two possible, uh, remedies would be a percentage of loss or, um, uh, or a, a flat grant. Uh, are we on a flat grant, would we also factor in percentage of loss to, you know, to these, to these businesses? In other words, uh, with a larger, a larger loss, it'd get a larger grant? Or there would be kind of like a one-size, it's all like the county, I think they give it a hundred K to, you know, to everybody, to people if they're, if they're, um, uh, eligible.
Well, the, the hope is, Jeffrey, that, you know, using this data, we can model it however council would see fit. So we could look at both models. We could look at something that maybe has different levels of relief depending on dollar loss. Or a fixed, this, uh, fixed layer system, if you will, where it's like, okay, you were down X percentage, then you're entitled to a certain amount of relief or, or a blend of the two. Um, we're, we're ready to model it any way you guys want to see it.
And would we have any, uh, I'm sorry, uh, could we?
No, go ahead.
Would we have any ability to ask, say it's a, say it's a rental business, a property that, that's, uh, you know, retail, or a restaurant or whatever, that is, is paying rent, it's not a mortgage. Would we have any ability to ask the, the, the landowner, the, the landlord to, um, participate in some capacity?
We did before. I mean, early on in the spring, we asked them to participate because they had to be willing to, uh, come up with a, their own rent relief plan. But we have not done that this next go-around and we, we just felt like we wanted to simplify it more and not go down that route again. Because this was, obviously in, in the spring, we didn't know how long this would go on. But I don't know how long you keep asking landlords to forgive, uh, rent, so.
Well, there's a bit of a price to, uh, get a new, I mean, a new tenant in there. I mean, in other words, uh, uh, it behooves the landlord to keep the original tenant in as long as possible. And it'd be a good, better bang for the buck if, if, uh, we can kind of save as many businesses as possible by prioritizing, um, where we spend our cash or, or can spend the taxpayers' cash. Jeffrey, I, your point was good. I think the landlords, the good landlords are going to be motivated to work with their tenants for the reason you stated. I, I think the ones that aren't in that group are, you know, if they're forced to, to, uh, give some concession, they're just going to get it back within the next year or two by raising rent. So I, I'm not sure. Yet, whereas I think that was a prudent approach in the spring, I'm, I'm not sure it's one that I would support now. I think simplicity is huge and, you know, I like the idea of a blended approach, you know, of, of, of blending, um, you know, how, how much they're down, how, how badly the, the, um, the business has been impacted. Um, I've seen a lot of businesses across sectors that are in that forty percent or more down, or even the thirty percent or more down, you know, and that's a bit troubling. Um, as, as Eric or Rick stated, I, you know, we're in a pandemic. I mean, we're all taking a hit. So, you know, getting money to people in the twenty percent or less down, I, you know, I think we're all in that camp. So, uh, you know, I'm not sure that's where we need to be focusing personally.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Um, and it's thirty-two is a pretty high number for the retail, um, to be forty percent plus down. So I think, I think developing some kind of criteria, and I liked it, what you're saying, about, you know, the thirty or forty percent and above. And also, um, perhaps criteria for that, um, that businesses, if, if applicable, can go after the PPP first. And, um, you know, make that a requirement. And I understand what James is saying. If you, if you go for it and you don't get it, fine, you know, but at least, you know, trying to do everything that we can to spread our dollars a little bit further, I think would be good.
My only,
Yeah.
My only concern with that, Aaron, is, is just, uh, you know, those of us that have been around a long time and, and maybe are a little bigger businesses and have stronger relationships with the banks clearly got advantageous treatment from the banks.
But I wonder if there's like even just showing that you have applied, um, you know, for, and then, and then it would also allow us not to, um, push out the number too far. But, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Dick, but I think we do want to strongly encourage, if you're able to apply for that, get the application together and put it into the banks.
I like where Kelly's going with that. I think we should see people applying for the federal dollars as part of whatever we do.
And then, and then if it doesn't work out, we can, we can still help. You know, it's not, it's not to say, you know, you have to choose one or the other. It's to say, you have to try. And I kind of am thinking like maybe not even wait to see if they get it or not. I don't know if that makes sense, but that's kind of what I'm imagining in my head because I feel like the money is needed right now and no matter what, the federal money is not going to be here right now. And so in my mind, I'm thinking like, we would request that they would, you know, get together their application and be working with the banker to get that done. But that we would be working to get them. And I, my preference is rent relief. I understand that the counties, um, been able to make a hundred thousand go really far. But I think that, um, rent relief to me just makes a lot of sense. You know, keeping people in the buildings here, I think that's what I kind of, um, feel like has a really meaningful contribution.
Can I clarify rent or mortgage relief?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, Kelly, I.
To me, yeah, meant rent or mortgage.
And we should open it up to every sector at this point.
Yeah.
Once Brian redoes some numbers for us.
And along those lines of redoing numbers, I know, Eric, you brought up leaving out January and February because those are low inflated. I'm just wondering, would it be worth, instead of just comparing year to year, twenty nineteen? I mean, twenty nineteen was a record-breaking year. Would it make sense to do maybe a three-year average? Would that be possible, Brian?
You know, I, I think, um, yeah, I mean, I, I'm sure Brian can do that. I think that'll skew the numbers again. I, the, I think it'll make the numbers look even worse because, you know, every year, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we're all upward trajectory years. Going back to twenty seventeen, I don't think does anything as a comparison point because it just gives you a, it just lowers what our, um, it just lowers that comparison number. Uh, I think you do it based on, you know, on last year. And then there are businesses out there that don't have that data. They weren't open in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, so.
The more we go back, the more we create these outliers, which were businesses that weren't open. We already have a handful of those when we're comparing to twenty nineteen. It makes it, we have to deal with them separately because they're new business and they don't have the criteria to compare. So the more we go back, the more we're going to create those, those one-offs out there. And, and when you, when we look at our, when we look at what we call our total net taxable sales, so keep in mind that, um, keep in mind that your total net taxable sales in twenty nineteen was six hundred and sixty million dollars, all right? So, um, you know, that's over half a billion dollars and that's grown each year by, well, you know, that's over half a billion dollars, and that's grown each year by, well, I don't know, what do we grow? You know, anywhere from five, five, six percent on that growth we see each year. So you're gonna see small growth and the numbers will just change. I, I don't think there'd be great value in going through and crunching all that data for that many prior years, personally.
And the other piece is, I think a lot of people pay percentage of rent, uh percentage of sales for their rent, and anyone that's renegotiated, at least it's going to be based on most recent year's sales, so. You, you know, kind of back to, to the timing of it, I, I think a few people hit on it, that, that timing's imperative, and so I would certainly be comfortable with requiring them to sign an affidavit that, that says that they will you know, proceed with earnest in, in applying for PPP for federal assistance as well, but to hold up this relief, waiting to see what the feds roll out, as long as this thing took to get where we are now. I, I think people are really on the edge right now, and I think we need to get help as soon as possible to them.
How, how long does it take to apply? Not to, not to receive it, but to apply? What, what is uh the forms of? I mean, do you have to bring in an accountant or a, an attorney? How, what's the process of just getting your foot in the door, then to see if you're gonna get uh, if you're gonna get some relief?
It, it takes a little while, Jeffrey. I'm sure Dick and I both need accountants to work through this because it's based on who even knows right now. So it's not even out yet because it hasn't been signed by the president. You know, once it goes out, then it trickles down to the banks. There are certain banks that will get the information first. The treasury, at least in the last run, the treasury changed the rules almost daily while they were figuring out how to do this. Now, a lot of us are hoping that there is a template now, it will work a lot quicker. Forgiveness is going to be a lot easier. They're already talking about expanding what you're allowed to use the money for compared to last time it was strictly labor. Now they're talking about sixty percent labor, forty percent rent relief. You can also use it for inventory now when you couldn't before, so this will be a much smoother rollout. It still takes a while to generate that money that the banks, you know, the banks were sort of left in the dark last time. We're still, so our PPP money for Eric's um was done in October. We still have not done our forgiveness stuff yet because they're just rolling out the information for how you get forgiveness, and some people are saying it will take at least six months, which puts you in a weird position, because you have a bunch of money that you've used. You don't know if you have to pay any of it back right now or not, you know? A lot of us are sitting around, you know, with our fingers crossed that we're not gonna have to take out a loan to pay back PPP money that was a loan, or, you know, or convert that to a loan, really, is what it is, so. It, it's really up in the air. I think if, I think if we can do it uh based on an affidavit, then we can do what we have, I think, done through the pandemic, is that, and that is get relief to people right away. We're the bridge. You know, we can get money out quickly, we're the bridge. I don't think we want to put a lot of conditions on businesses. We want to say, just prove to us, sign this affidavit that you're gonna go for the PPP money, and then we can get money to you. And I think that's, as a, as a local, you know, municipality, that's how we should operate.
And I, I agree with that. I don't think I fully understood. So PPP may or may not be a loan?
Correct.
So that's a little bit tough for me, too. I do worry, I do want, I do want to be cognizant of, of restaurants, of force, of forcing restaurants to uh borrow money. So now I sound like I'm flip flopping, I understand. I just, I just want enough, a- as many people to be able to, to get what they can, but at the same time, I don't want to force a restaurant to borrow a bunch of money either, and, and get, you know, further into debt.
Aaron, I think that a lot of us think that the second round of PPP will be less likely a loan and more forgivable than the first round that had these. Nobody still knows if they're forgiven, and it is difficult to say to some, you know, like to say to Dick, hey, you should go out and get more PPP money, even though you don't know how much of the first round you get to is forgiven.
Right.
Their rule's been, it has been, it has been crazy. I mean, like, on a daily basis, they change their minds about what you can write off for taxes, what you can't. I, it's it's been very difficult.
Yeah, the fact, fact of the matter is, Aaron, when Eric and I applied for the PPP last spring, we signed loan documents. Right now, it is one hundred percent a loan, and big numbers, right? I just got my application for forgiveness in about two weeks ago. Um I was told it's gonna be four to five months before I hear whether it's forgiven, or how much is forgiven, or anything else. You know, this, as Eric said, is the PPP number, you know, it's gotta be signed by the president. Then the treasury comes up with a set of rules, and they pass it to the SBA, small business. And, and then they set up a bunch of rules, and then they start interacting with the bank who has to set up these electronic portals, and the rules just change each step along the way. This is not gonna happen timely enough to, to bail out our small business, so I
Right, right.
Not to belabor it, but I'm all for an affidavit, and let's get them some help as soon as possible.
Is there, is there any way we can uh um incentivize the banks, our local banks uh to prioritize some of these? So, so I'm, I'm woefully ignorant. You apply for a PPE, you have to go through a bank, or you, so you have to go have your accountant talk to a bank, or how, how's that all work? And is the, are the bank a crucial step in this whole process? And is there any way that we can kind of uh light a fire under them to make them prior, ask them to prioritize this?
No, you know, we're, we're very fortunate, and so some of this, Jeffrey, depends on who you bank with. If you bank with First Bank, you're sort of in the, you were in the first round, you're in the driver's seat, because the bank, First Bank here in Breckenridge is an SBA-approved bank. There are other banks that are not. Some banks you have face-to-face, you know, Dick and I have good face-to-face relationships with our bank. If you bank with a more online bank, you don't have that flexibility. You hire an accountant, there's a, there's a portal that you go and you put are you, all your information. If you're fortunate enough to use a bank that is an SBA-approved bank, you're at the top of the list because you're one of their customers, no matter how big you are. You could be a tiny, tiny, you know, tiny restaurant, they take you first because you're a customer. Some of the people had trouble with their banks earlier and then tried to switch over to First Bank. And then, you know, then they get lost in the shuffle, so this thing really drags out. Also, don't forget, the president's gonna sign this, it is now Christmas time. There's like a week or so off for everybody in the federal government. They'll come back in January knowing they have two more weeks to work under the current administration, and then everything's gonna change again, so this is probably the worst time for everybody. You know, this is the dark winter we've all been talking about. It's, it's difficult to get these things through right now. We're gonna be in a weird place with the federal government trying to get stuff done. People are changing their mind about whether Biden is president or not. I mean, there's, there's so much going on right now. This rollout will be considerably longer, I think, than the last one. So, we need
Yeah, yeah, you're suggesting we streamline, streamline this as much as possible, shoot the snake closest to our foot, and try to save businesses that we can, and hope for the best as far as the PPP and all the other federal
I think we gotta try to get people to February eventually.
Yeah.
In all sectors. We need to figure out a way to get people to February, and, you know.
Based on Eric and Dick's explanation of how this process actually works, and that was an education for me, for sure. I would like to be the bridge. That seems like a, a really good responsible place for us to be.
Alright, so I have lots of questions, unless you still have more discussion, because there uh, are we gonna? If you want stuff out by the first week in January, then we've got to, you've got to tell us all the parameters, and we've got to go make it happen now. Because we won't, you know, you don't meet again until January, what, twelfth or something like that? So, first question, do you want an affidavit that they're gonna pursue PPP? Yes or no?
Yes. Yeah. Rick, I think actually the first question should be, do we need to have a meeting before the twelfth of January?
Well, we can, yeah. Because you can give us parameters and we can go out, because I need to know if you wanna. The biggest question for us is, we could run the new numbers. There'll be some differences, I'm not sure how much. I mean, when we ran, Eric, when we ran restaurant as an industry before, it was only a few percentages higher. It was like twenty-three percent down, remember, versus this one?
Well, when did we run, we ran that after the summer, though. We've had a couple crappy months since then, since then.
I don't know, well, your fall, your fall has been stronger than twenty nineteen.
And not November, November was lousy when we went to
No, that's why we saw such a, that's why your restaurants are down thirty-three percent in November.
Yeah.
Compared to the other, I mean, groceries carry in November, um but
I, I will tell you right now, if we, me personally, for the year, if I take out January and February and I go to date, so whatever today is, the seventh, twenty-second of December, I go from thirty percent down for the year to forty percent down for the year, if I pull out January and February. I think that's a big enough swing. Then
We'll do it, yeah. I mean, we can do that, but then do you, what are you leaning towards? Cause we want to get a feel for how we're gonna do. Are you leaning towards, let's assume that in order to be eligible for any relief, you had to have suffered X amount, X percent of loss? Is it twenty percent or greater? Is it ten? What's
I think it's hard to say until we see those numbers again.
You want it broken, would we break it down by increments of twenty, Brian? Do you want it broken down by increments of ten? Or what?
No, I think twenty, I think this is good how you guys have done this. I mean, this information, I think, is fantastic. It's hard to say without seeing another set of, you know, it's hard to say.
And do we want? Twenty percent is very understandable, it's just the updated numbers.
Since this is rent relief for January, do we want to look at the full year, or do we want to look at, like, November, December, January?
You won't have the full year until the end of January.
But, but you know what I'm saying? Are we, are we looking, but still, like, philosophically, are we looking for at, like, since March? Or are we looking at the last three months that we can gather, or something like that, to see what the current state is of each business? Because they could have had a great, they could have had a great summer, but then the winter is killing them. You know, like, I, I just
Aaron, I would say March through November, because many of us rely on March cash flow um to, to get through the fall, to get into the next ski season. It, it kind of depends on your business, you know, places that have decks and every, you know, big summer business, not, you know, maybe not so much. I mean, there's restaurants where July is their biggest month, July and August is bigger than March, because of
But I'm a little confused. So if January and February are our biggest months, why are we throwing them out? I mean, we did get that money in this year.
Because everybody burned that money in, I mean
March and April.
In March and April, and May, I mean, burned. It's, it's, you know, that was pre-pandemic, nobody was planning for this to happen. I can't tell you how people run, you know, I mean, there are people that are sucking on fumes right now.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that it matters whether it's January through or March through. I would agree with Eric, March through is better, but I think it's just, I think expediting is the most important thing, is to keep it as simple as we can and, and get the help to the people, and I, you know, I don't know that we can wait till the twelfth for a meeting. Yeah, I, I think these, I agree with Eric, I think these, the way you've got it broken up now, Brian, is fine. I would just update it with your most current November numbers, and either subtract January, February, or not, that's kind of up to the council. And, and then, you know, I would offer rent relief up to five thousand dollars for January. And, you know, maybe we, we measure restaurants the same way, you know, instead of just going across the boards and giving it to all restaurants regardless, we say this is all businesses, restaurants, retail, short-term rental, everybody, and if you're over a certain threshold down, then, then you apply, and you get up to five grand, and, you know, we can decide what that threshold is once we see the updated numbers. But I think we need to give direction to staff and pretty specific direction to staff to, to allow them to get the work done, to make a decision.
Yeah, I, I think I, I think I would uh agree with what Dick said. I think we need to streamline this, and I, and granted, this is not, w- w- we could maybe make, we could make some mistakes, there could be some inequity, inequities here, but I think timing is probably uh as important as anything, that, that would kind of offset any sort of disparities that we, you know, in, in, in the return. But let me ask you this, is a twenty percent say a, a, a restaurant suffering a twenty-five percent loss? Is that the same um pain as a retail or a construction company, or a lodging company suffering that same loss? Does anyone know?
It is to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a good point, Dennis.
Yeah.
But is it, what I, is it the, the same risk of going out of business?
No, I think it's, I, I, I think there are differences. It depends what you're talking about. Are you talking lodging companies? Or are you talking somebody that's bought a second home here that uses it to make cash? I think that's a, there's a totally different I think there's a totally different discussion there. You know, somebody that has bought three homes here, doesn't live here, you know, I, whether they, they're contributors or not, there's a difference. If they're using that to pay mortgage for a place, or if it's somebody with a brick and mortar retail store that's about to up and leave because they can't make a rent payment, so.
I mean, aren't we prioritizing brick and mortar?
I think that's a, I think that's a question.
I think we should personally, because to Eric's point, you know, I think for the short-term rental market, we, we're, I, in my mind, we're focusing on the full-service rental management companies.
Yeah.
Not what Eric described, is somebody that's got three or four homes and created a corporation to manage them, and has no brick or mortar commitment to the community.
And they could sell, they could sell a house and be whole pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Generally, a restaurant employs more people when a, when a restaurant goes out of business more, you know, it's a, you're losing probably more people to unemployment as a result of that. You're generally on from, you know, if you look at the total loss in sales, you know, restaurants, total net taxable sales are typically uh per, per individual business higher than uh retail. There's always gonna be some exceptions to that, but, you know, you have a, you have double the number of uh retail businesses reporting versus restaurants in here. And that you have significantly more economic loss in total net taxable sales coming from a smaller number of restaurants, so. But you know, no matter what we do and what decisions we'll make, there'll always be that one business that just missed out, right? So, um, that's just the way it is. And, you know, the good news is, we don't know who, what individual, you know, when we run these numbers both ways, there'll be some that may have gotten it under one way and not gotten it under the other, but nobody knows, uh because you don't see the behind-the-scenes stuff on that. So what we'll do is we'll run that. When do you want? Cause we need to get an idea of the total number of eligible businesses, and then we would get an idea of how much, based on the dollar amount that people would be eligible for what it would end up costing us.
Can we meet, can we meet next Tuesday? Is anybody, everybody around, everybody going away? Rick?
I don't know if finance could, if, because of the Christmas this week, if they can pull the data together by next Tuesday, can you, Brian?
We can, Rick.
I don't, I don't want to put anybody out too much over the holidays, but if you could do it, that'd be I, I think if we can all meet just to talk about this issue on the twenty-ninth at eight, eight o'clock again, and, and nail this down, I think our business community would be grateful that, you know, we take some time to give them some assurance going into January, that, that there'll be some help.
Yeah, my, my holiday is gonna suck anyway. I'm, I'm all, I can meet, I mean, I think it's, it's all, except Aaron's, Aaron's is gonna be an extravaganza, but yeah, I I'm, I'm ready to get into it.
I think helping the community is gonna be the only bright spot of this holiday.
Isn't that
That's the only gift I want for Christmas.
It's the only gift you're gonna get for Christmas.
I'm good with that. Can we, is anybody opposed to make it on a Wednesday morning? Or is there Tuesday for a reason?
What's, what number is that?
Every day is the same for me, so.
Yeah, exactly.
The thirtieth as opposed to the twenty-ninth, but if it doesn't work. Rick?
Um.
You know what, I'll switch, go ahead, Rick.
You know what, I'll switch, go ahead, Rick.
I don't think it matters, Shannon, do you? I don't see anything going on there, but.
As far as I'm concerned, it's all about Dennis. So yeah, whatever, whatever he needs.
Well, it gives the staff a little more time too, so, you know, and hopefully, you know, Brian, when you have the numbers together, you can send them to us. We have a little more time to think about it and we can talk offline and kind of analyze it.
We track on, you get a spreadsheet for Christmas, how's that?
Yeah, great. We might tier this thing also, since there's only a certain amount of money we have. You know, we might want to say something like businesses that have lost fifty percent can apply for five grand. Businesses that have lost thirty percent can apply for twenty-five hundred or something like that. We gotta. We gotta stretch this, you know, this amount of money since it's gonna be open to everybody. Um, let, let's, you know.
Yeah, it's a good.
Let's look at brick and mortar, let's maybe think about a tiered system, Brian, while you're grinding this through your skull, um. And give us some, some options like that might, might be helpful.
Hey, Eric, you bring up a good point. So we have like fifteen hundred bucks left, or a hundred and fifty thousand bucks left in the, uh. Five hundred we initially, um, identified is, is there Rick and Shannon or? And Brian, I mean, is, is there any chance that we would have more money to add to that? For the second round?
We're gonna have to.
I'm sure I understand what you're asking.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not sure the hundred and fifty thousand that's, that I ballparked, it's left. In the five hundred thousand we initially earmarked for, for rent relief, I think we're gonna have to add to it as well.
Oh, yes.
Well, that's, yes, without a doubt.
Yeah, I mean, when you're opening this up to other businesses, you're probably, you know, we're still gonna be looking at. Yeah, you know, we'll probably at least have, depending on how you tier it and that, but we'll have anywhere from fifty to seventy-five to eighty. Businesses we may want to be, uh, helping out there. That's assuming we don't even touch the ones that, you know, that are less than. Twenty percent loss, um, so, uh. Yeah, we'll probably need to go at least up to five hundred or more again. Which I, you know, I still think you have that luxury, you know, we, you're. When you really look at the different capital projects that are out there that have to get done at some point in the next four to five years and the. When you look at your fund balances, you're still teetering around that five million dollar number that that's just. Really your discretionary funds that can be spent, which is, that sounds like a lot, but that's lower than you guys have ever had. That means every little project that pops up, that's, that, and that doesn't even count a couple of things that are extremely important to you. Like are we building another childcare center in the next five years? That, if you did that, that comes out of that money, which would take most of that to do. So, you know, you're. You're on a, uh, you know, all this loss that everybody's suffering is lost to the town, right? That's how we survive off of these. This, uh, these net taxable sales, um, that's where we get our money too, that allows us to do everything that the community is used to. So.
But the more businesses that we can keep together. Couple of months, the better the engine runs when our summer shows up. You know, if we lose a bunch of businesses and you talk about new people moving into town to start those businesses, there's a big lag period. You know, if we could, if we can hang on to as many as possible and hit July. Full bore, we can make a lot of money back. I, I think our summer can be really good if we can. Control the loss of these businesses. So I think, you know, I totally agree with what Rick says. But I think the number one priority for this council is to try to keep as many people solvent. As possible to keep the engine running when we go back to normal.
One thing I'd like a little, cause we, we're gonna need to think this through and, and I think lodging is gonna be a tough one.
Yeah.
To deal with and, uh, you know. I don't know how and what, if there's parameters we would draw around. You know, a lodging establishment, I. Um, and how their license, maybe if that's different than. You know, then, then somebody's single-family residence that they use for, uh, you know, short-term rentals. Because I don't think at all we should be trying to subsidize those.
Did we subsidize lodging in that first, the very first round back in April when we gave it? Because I thought Wendy and Gary's point when they were on that committee was a really important one, which is. If we can keep the brick and mortar of Breckenridge intact, which means we can give more money to those people. Who are, you know, hosting, um. Or who, I guess, who are providing the services like, um, restaurants and retail. Then the people will continue to come and stay in the lodging. I mean, to me, it really made sense, like let's keep fueling this fire of Breckenridge, you know, and then the, the lodging companies benefit. From that. So, I mean, I don't know if that will, you know, if lodging.
Well, what's hurting right now is the one household rule.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, people could come all day long, but if they're trying to follow the rule, it's the household rule and that's. We know, I think that's probably gonna get addressed sooner than later with the county, uh, but, um. Yeah, so.
And Brian, I thought there was a question, as we look at these net, net taxable sales. Sixteen percent down or percentage of change in construction is not what I'm hearing in town.
Right.
So, I don't know where the disconnect is there. I mean, numbers are numbers, I get that. But every construction company, I, if they're working, they're doing really well, so.
I thought we were, I thought we talked about the only reason that's down is because some of those big projects like the Peak Gate Hotel, which we were planning on coming in. Didn't come in and that's the only reason they're down. So it's like, they're still busy with other stuff. It's just that we didn't have this one major. Or some, maybe more than that major project.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right, Kelly. Like we were saying before, construction is so anecdotal, we're also comparing to last year. So if there was a big project in nineteen, then that makes our sector number look worse in twenty-twenty. Even though they're working or whatnot, there just isn't, you know, some other major concern in town doing work on, um, you know, a, a large. Uh, well, project. So, construction can really swing and you gotta kind of look at the prior year and say. Oh, well, there was a big project in twenty nineteen, that's why twenty twenty looks low, even though people say, no, it's business as usual.
So they wouldn't really be eligible.
No.
Or there wouldn't be someone applying for that because it's just not the same as a different industry.
And, and I would argue they have a, they have less of a fixed cost, you know.
Well, generally they're not a brick and mortar structure, they're a business.
I, I think, I think we try as hard as possible to keep this to brick and mortar lodging companies, you know, places like the fireside. We gotta draw a line somewhere. I mean, you know, you could talk about Beaver Run, but what are they gonna do with five thousand bucks? You know, you can't give it to every room in Beaver Run, that's not gonna work. So we gotta, we gotta sort of parse this thing out a little bit. I think there's. There are brick and mortar lodging companies that should be eligible. There are. Brick and mortar little hotels like Fireside or some of the other B and Bs in town, I think that are eligible. Um, but someplace we're gonna have to draw a line. You can't give money to every single person that rents on Airbnb and VRBO, I think should be. You know, to, the, just that, there's gotta be a cutoff there somewhere too, um, for.
On that, how are, what are our different bulk license for accommodation? Like how is, um, Fireside different from an Airbnb? What are the different types of license?
Those would be under a lodging license, not your, what you think of as your typical STR license for a house or a condo. Um, those are licenses for, um, what's called a lodger, a lodging license. And then also it's important to, to remind you guys that in that report are only the brick and mortar property management companies under STR. It doesn't have any of the, um, you know, own a couple of houses in town kind of thing. So, that, that's what we put in there to begin with.
Great.
There's a good line right there.
Yeah, but Brian, could you, could you break down your report to show lodger licenses and their? A number, had the number of those and their, uh, and the NTS loss?
Well, so, um, lodging. Versus, um, the management companies.
Yeah, the Marriotts, the B and Bs, if they're licensed as lodging establishments versus a. You know, a STR, um.
Yeah, we can pull those in.
Sure.
Cool.
Um, I am sorry to do this, but I do have a conflict at nine AM on Wednesday, the thirtieth. Is it possible to, is, could this just be an hour? Could we start earlier or a different day?
You know what, Aaron, let's go back to Tuesday. I'll just change what I've got and we'll make it work.
Okay.
Tuesday works.
All right, thank you, Dennis.
Is it a spa, is it a spa treatment? You're, uh, you, you have to cancel, Dennis? I'm just having my nails done, Jeffrey. Okay, yeah, okay. I think we can accommodate, Aaron. It's, it's all about Aaron now.
If we're being flexible, we could have, you know, I don't know, done something.
Christmas, uh, okay, is that Brian and Rick, does that give you enough info to? Grind something out?
Absolutely.
Uh, let me hold the, um. Cory, if you're listening, are you thinking of anything? Cory's been running a program for us for so long that. If there's another question that she has, um.
Well, the other one I'm wondering is Kelly, how are, how are our childcare doing? How's that sector?
The what?
Um, the childcare facilities are doing well, um, you know, they, they all have their ups and downs. Um, but Cory did in addition to this program that she's been helping with, she's also put out a childcare application. For families and this is for when fam, um, when there's a closure at the school that would require you to, you know. Be home with your kid rather than, um, then you can apply for, um, funds that we allocated a. Month ago or so. So she's also put out an application, um, that's available for families. You don't have to be on the tuition assistance. Um, program, we're hoping that we can cast a wider net than that because we know that people are experiencing a loss of income due to this. So, she's already had four applications and I'm sure there will be more. But I think that's a really great program because it helps the families, but then it also helps the childcare facilities because. They're able to continue to have that regular income rather than having any ups and downs if they. If they're the ones, you know, granting any relief, then they have a harder time of making sure that. They can pay their teachers and having that consistency. So, um, I know that Cory's spent some time on that over the last. Um, couple of weeks and we're very grateful for what she and Lori have put together in order for families to get that relief. But the facilities have, um, have been doing well, you know, they've had some closures, some of them more recently and others. It's cyclical, just like, um, it seems to be within the community, but, um, everybody just keeps plugging away.
Cory is, um, here if you need her.
Uh, and will they apply for any of these federal dollars, Kelly?
Um, well, so there is the state money that we saw, um, a couple of weeks ago, or I guess just a week ago. Um, become available, they'll be applying for that. And then I don't know about the federal dollars. I'm sure they will apply, but we haven't had any specific, um, discussions yet.
All right.
Um, if, if, if I may just quickly, what I've heard is to eliminate January and February. From the report for the two years for nineteen and twenty, um, also to bring in the lodging companies versus property. Management companies in the STR sector and then also to build up maybe some kind of model for what tiered relief would look like. So we could say if, for example, okay, it'll be a hundred thousand dollars, we can look at where that will go by percentages and. Um, maybe we'll even make it something where we can try to model it real time at our discussion on the twenty-ninth.
Yep, perfect.
Will do.
All right, uh, everybody done on that topic?
Maybe one more thing on rent relief, just for if anyone listening joined late, that we did discuss. Workforce rent relief and FERC still has a lot of money and that's why we're not discussing that.
Thanks, Carol.
All right, one other item to get off of COVID.
What?
Uh, the Lizzie load.
Good morning. We'll change topics for a minute. Uh, thanks for all your work, counsel and leadership on this. It's amazing. What we're able to do to help out the community, um. We've got a referral from the county and a referral basically is whenever there's a development proposal that's near our borders. We typically get, um, early notice of it from Summit County Planning Department and they give us an update. Uh, you know, basically show us the application and let us offer comments to them early in the process and. We do the same thing on border projects near the town limits with the county as well. Because we've got this great relationship developed back over twenty years now, which started really with the Joint Upper Blue Master Plan. Um, document that both us and the, and the town of Blue River and Summit County have all agreed to. Um, we really have tried to collaborate on land use issues that are important to all of us up here in the community and obviously the. Preservation of the back country has been one of the primary things we've worked on in years since then. So at times we've come to the council, it's been several years now, but at times we've come to the council when there's been. Proposed developments outside the town limits that we have issues with or concerns about. And examples are that are the ranch, which is up, up on, off Baldy Road essentially. Uh, the council reviewed that maybe four or five years ago and probably even more so is a number of years ago, but the Western Sky Development. Which is basically everything you see up off of here on Heights Road, up high there, below the ra- radio towers on Gibson Hill. Um, development up there, council had serious concerns. And it seems to me one of the key issues is when we've got visual backdrops that are gonna be altered significantly. By development that's occurring. Um, it's something that we've tried to address here at the town pretty carefully in terms of. When we do see new development to keep it off ridge lines, to screen it as much as possible with vegetation, et cetera. Um, and, uh, so now we have this new proposal, which is on Little Mountain and, um. I believe on page seven of the packet, I did show the, where this property is located. And Little Mountain is a hill that's immediately to the east of the ice arena. So if you're going up Lower Boris Pass Road. It's on your right, um, as you're driving up the road before you make the big kind of hairpin curve up there. Um, and, um, Little Mountain at this point in time is entirely undeveloped. Um, the town actually owns two, there's two, there's four properties total that kind of straddled the hillside there. And the town owns the two on either end, on the east end, that's part of the Wakefield Mine, mine site, the, um, Sawmill Museum. And on the west end, we own that property as well. And then in the middle, there's two privately held properties. And the larger of those, which is about eighteen or nineteen acres in size, is the one that's being proposed for a development. Um, we have some, as I've identified in the memo and, um, in the attached letter. Got some serious concerns about the visual impacts of this development and the environmental impacts as well. Um, it's really, what's proposed is to switch back a road off of Boris Pass Road. All the way up to the ridge top and to put a home up there. Um, it's gonna create several acres of disturbance, removal of the existing trees and vegetation. Um, and is really, we feel gonna change the whole open space character of that hillside. Um, which is like I said, right now is undeveloped. So it's, it's a significant concern to us. Um, and it conflicts, we believe with a lot of the master plan policies, both, both in the Joint Upper Blue Master Plan. And in some of the master plans that the county has, they have their own master plan for outside the town limits here. As well as our county com- comprehensive plan. Um, we submitted a letter as, as staff a couple of months ago on this when we first were notified of it. We didn't have time to bring it to council at that point, cause it's pretty time sensitive to get the letter in. They held, uh, the Upper Blue Planning Commission held a. They held uh, the Upper Blue Planning Commission held a work session on this back in November. And I was able to attend and present the town's comments um, to them. And uh, right now is a point in time, they've had a work session. I'm not sure exactly what the applicants took away from that. There were some concerns expressed by the planning commission about the length of the road. But it wasn't, um, I don't think the applicants heard, this is a no-go. Um, this is just absolutely against our master plan policies, et cetera, and you really need to go back to the draw on board. Which was what we were frankly hoping that they would hear from the planning commission. And so right now, the applicants are kind of regrouping and deciding their next course of action on this. And so we think the timing is appropriate for them to hear beyond just from our staff. But to hear from the town councils as a whole on um, this project, assuming that you agree with the. Concerns that we've outlined here. So I've attached a letter uh, to be potentially signed by Eric. Certainly want your comments on this. We have, as we've identified in the letter, we have some significant concerns. And uh, we think it conflicts with a number of master plan policies. And one of the key points we're trying to make here is that. You really need to take a look at alternative sites. Um, we believe there may be a site at the bottom of the. Um, right off of Boris Pass Road that could be developed. It's relatively flat right there as opposed to, you know, switch back and up this, you know, several hundred feet up this hillside. Um, so that's kind of an overview of where we are and I'd be glad to answer any questions that the council has.
Alright, any questions for Mark?
Yeah, does the county in Jump have the same kind of aversion to ridge top development as as the town does?
Uh, yes, um, they don't have the same specific standards, Jeffrey. Um, we have some very specific policies about ridgeline development and avoiding it. They but they do have some policies about avoiding ridge lines in their countywide comprehensive plan. And I believe in the jump, there's something about that too. There's a discussion of visually important lands and protecting visual backdrops, that type of thing. It's just maybe not quite as detailed as what we have.
Mark, wasn't there a sentence in the letter that you sent a couple of weeks ago? And I'm sorry I didn't pull it out. Um, but I thought it said like. Basically, this means you can't develop the current project. Do you know the sentence I'm talking about?
Um, no, I could, uh, the letter's actually attached.
Yeah, I looked at it and I'm sorry that I didn't pull it out, but um. I guess I just, I really appreciated that staff did such a good job of kind of pulling out all those different. Um, you know, goals and and codes that we felt they were inconsistent with. Because I think that's really the only leg we have to stand on. I mean, it's um. It's just such a shame because it's like a huge block of forest that they're gonna basically completely bisect and. It's right adjacent. I looked on the uh, Forest Service Safe Passageways um, map. And it's right adjacent that stretch of Highway nine that they wanna put some safe passageways crossings on. And then I know when um, when the Sisters Hut was analyzed. That whole area from Sisters Hut all the way over, you know, was considered like a a links linkage. And I know they can't do that on private property anymore. They just say that it's non-habitat because they don't have any. Um, any way to. Require that someone doesn't develop their property, but it is a shame because. I mean, this is habitat. It's a it's adjacent, a wetland. It's right uphill of the, you know, beautiful wetland complex. So if there was some way that we could maybe um. Convey to them that building a road with retaining walls would really interrupt any sort of. Um, animal movement, especially ungulates like moose and we don't have that much elk around here anymore, but. You know, this is this, it's all the same species that we're spending a lot of time and energy on in the gulch. Um, it's just. Doing, it's just, you know, putting up another roadblock, pun intended for them. But I thought I thought your original letter was terrific and really highlighted a lot of the points. I'm sad that the county couldn't look at that and see that. You know, as a partner, this is a no-go.
Yeah, thanks for that, um, Kelly. You know, the one thing we heard at least from one or two planning commissioners is uh. You know, yeah, you know, a building site at the at the bottom next to the road is not optimal. Um, because, you know, John Daisy did the same thing lower down Boris Pass Road and. Apparently took a while to sell, yeah, because it's it's more in the shade. It's a north facing area. That's not really the purview of the planning commission to be making decisions based on economic return on property. Um, really should be based on looking at their master plan policies and their code and making the decision based on that. Um, so we've got a little bit of disconnect there right now with the planning commission, not sure where it's gonna go. Um, but I think they just need to continue to hear from us, you know, we have these concerns.
Mark, does the the planning process work the same as town? In other words, the um. County Planning Commission will yay and nay a project and then the the BOCC always has the um, ability to call it up?
Yeah, that's right, um, Jeffrey. In fact, the BOCC may have to have a hearing on this. I'll have to check, but I believe on the bigger projects, they they have to have a hearing.
Okay.
So I did have one other thought and it was um, possibly asking the county to require that they ensure they can get. Um, fire insurance on a property that's built in this location. And two thoughts on that. One is, you know, whether that road is built to code. I mean, they shouldn't get a variance that. Wouldn't allow um, you know, a fire engine to be able to make it up that road. But then additionally, I heard as part of the, when I was listening into the red, white and blue board is that. Actually, a lot of properties are having a really hard time when they're built in um, the forest like this. And so even getting fire insurance, and I know that one of our bullets was saying like, no tree removal outside of. Their building envelope. Um, and so I think those are gonna be in conflict. Either they won't be able to get insurance unless they do a whole lot more clearing. Or they're gonna build it and then they're gonna say, well, now we have to do the clearing because in order to get fire insurance, that's what we have to do.
Hey, hey, Mark, what about water and sanitation? They they will they have to do a well in a leach field?
Well, that's a good question, Jeffrey. Yeah, they'll do a well for sure and they're probably gonna have to drill hundreds of feet down. They'll, you know, I'm sure they can afford to do that. Um, the sanitation's another one. The county code requires tying into the sewer system if they're within, I think it's like three hundred or four hundred feet. Of sewer lines to the property. And so their county staff had identified that as an issue earlier on. Um, and it was identified at the meeting we were at last week and I have not heard clarification on that. The applicants, of course, were coming out and saying that, no, there's some exception to that and they've talked to Andy Carlberg and he has. No desire to serve this. He's fine without serving it. So they're telling that story. I'm not sure. On the requirement, um, we need to look into it more with the county in terms of if they have to do that, but um. I think that's a good question, Jeffrey, because if they have to do that and they've got to run sewer lines up the hill, that's. That's another, just another expense. Um, that's the whole thing about this project. It's gonna be hugely expensive. To cut this road in up to the top, bring utilities up there, let alone to build the home at the at the on the ridge top.
Questions? Uh, how's everybody feel about the letter?
Uh, Mark, so.
Great letter. Thank you.
Thanks.
I like the letter that in the form that it's it's well-written and it's factual. I don't think it's strong enough. I would really like to see us take it up to the next level. And I know we're trying to be nice, government to government, town to county. But the last sentence that says, should this move forward, please consider carefully. I love what you said earlier. I like no-go. This is against everything that we've been trying to do in the Upper Blue. So um, that's the only comment.
I agree with Dennis.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I I think that's totally legit. Carol? Do you wanna harsh up the language a little bit, Mark and?
Yeah, absolutely. I can do that.
Well, and then I had, we're gonna add something on the checking on fire insurance that Kelly suggested also. Was that part of the letter?
Yeah, and I, you know what? I think if you put something about sewer also.
Yeah, that sewer cut unless they run it down the the driveway, that's gonna be another huge scar on that parcel.
Yep.
Those are great points. I can incorporate all those into the letter for sure.
Uh, anything else?
That's all we got, Eric.
Hey, Mark, do you wanna just, um, when you do that, how about you send it to everybody? Uh, just as a final check and then and then we we don't need to have a vote on that. We can just send it out then. As long as nobody have a real heartburn with it.
Sounds great.
Thank you so much for being on top of that, Mark. That's a really important, important project to keep an eye on.
You're welcome. Thanks for your support on that.
Thanks from all of us.
Yeah, I agree, Mark, and and thanks for bringing it to us as well, so we can uh, maybe do some lobbying as well.
What else we got, Rick?
That.
That it? We don't wanna drag this on for another six or eight hours?
I have a que- I have a question.
Go right to Christmas.
Hey, um, Rick, when do we uh, what's it, what's the status with the STR hotline? Well, uh, the the new incarnation of it?
Well, we're still under the old one until we make the shift and we're gonna have a little bit of a carryover, but I believe it's. Like that third week of January.
Oh, okay. Alright.
Jeffrey, do you use that a lot? You turn a lot of people in?
Yeah, lot usually um, just noise coming from Carol's house.
Nice.
Yeah, you know, the only thing that I'll, the, there's a petition that was submitted. I don't know how many people signed it out of Frisco, uh, relative to dance studios and gymnasiums and. That they want the county to look at um, expanding five-star, which the whole intent of the five-star was to be more than just restaurants. It is applicable to other types of businesses. Um. You know, that was not the priority. Obviously, the priority was to get restaurants open, but then the county said that they will look at uh. It will look at expanding and I know they're talking about it today, I believe, with the Board of Health. And uh, I don't know when decisions will come out on on where we might see five-star expand to other businesses. But we'll stay on top of that and communicate it to those businesses that it applies to. Um, you know, the other big thing they're trying to get a shift on is the uh, lodging requirement of one household. Um, which is not necessarily a requirement of level red. That is a requirement the county added to make it comparable to private homes, so. We'll see. We'll see what changes.
I really feel for that whole situation because I'll tell you, the short-term rentals. Are not.
Yeah.
At all following that. So it's a huge bummer that our good partners are. Feeling the penalty.
Well, and it's a bummer too, Kelly, because you know, if you're expecting it of locals. And you live next to a property that's got five different license plates outside and you're not one to want, you know. If you're not Jeffrey and you're not gonna turn people in all the time, you know, it's just sort of a bummer for you.
I mean, they arrive in sixteen passenger vans and it's.
Oh, yeah.
Sixteen twenty-year-olds.
Yeah. So.
So impressed.
Alright.
I mean, I think we were scheduled to have lifestyles coming in in a couple of weeks, but it looks like they're probably gonna cancel and change because we just can't uh. You know, we can't give them any co- any level of confidence that the rules will be different then, and so they. Uh, probably sounds like as of yesterday, they're probably moving more to canceling some of that.
They confirm they're canceling?
Okay.
That's not a bad thing. It's just more.
You know, the other thing that's gonna be interesting to see is how we're gonna deal with vaccinations once. Cause it's our understanding that once people have received that vaccination, they're not required to wear a mask. And that's gonna.
Says who?
That's gonna be uh, that's gonna be uh, difficult.
I don't think that's true. I thought they said you could still be carrying it and they don't know that much about it and masks are like, long-term here to stay.
That's not the conversation we were part of, but we'll see.
When do first responders get it? Like, um, fire and fire and police?
Start, it'll start this weekend. So they get one shot and then what, thirty days later, they get their second shot, so.
And then after that, column columnist, uh.
Jeffrey, you wanna be a politician, cause since Rubio and Graham got theirs, even though, you know, they've been pretty much deniers on this thing. I think hires get their shots first, it seems like.
I mean, Jeffrey's in the age group that's expendable.
Wow. Same age group.
Can we go back to the five-star for a minute? I um, I know that Rick and Shannon and Julia. I I know you guys are just saying, hey, it was no big deal. We just put our nose down, but really. From all of us, what what happened over that five-day period was huge and I really wanna make sure that. Everybody in the town uh, realizes that we really appreciate that effort.
Yeah, here, here, yeah.
Well said, Dennis.
Yes.
Alright.
Anything else? Hey, everyone, have a Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays and uh, we will see you um.
Twenty ninth.
Oh, yeah, a week from today.
Week from today. I can't go more than a week without seeing your lovely faces, so.
I'm gonna tell you, this is, I miss you guys. I I miss you guys.
Together again.
Yeah.
Alright, everyone. Thanks and.
Peace out. See you.
Holidays to everybody watching too. Thanks for being with us today. We'll see you next week.
Yeah, yeah.
Peace.